If this gets approved.
I'm I'm following the order of the regular meetings of council, city council Tuesday, July 25th. We do have a call on Reverend Reston. Reston Glenn Meyer here from Trinity.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you have given us this good city as our heritage. Grant that we remember your generosity and constantly do your will. Bless all those in positions of authority here among us tonight. And those that watch us in all the other roles of the city. Guided by your spirit, that they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly, peaceably through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here. 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 Here.
Here. We're on to recognitions and awards out of proclamation to read. It's Small Business Administration sent this to me. And I told them I would do it. It is a novel, so you guys sit down. On this day, 70 years of President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an active Congress established in Small Business Administration with the purpose of promoting and supporting the growth and success of small businesses across the United States of America. Since its founding, the SBA is a pillar of support for Americans entrepreneurs, forcing the growth and vitality of small businesses at the backbone of our economy. Today, we recognize the SBA's valuable contributions and dedication to empowering entrepreneurs, fostering economic opportunity and innovation, building a vibrant, inclusive, and resilient economy for all Americans. Over the past seven decades, the SBA has implemented groundbreaking programs and innovative lending initiatives that have helped entrepreneurs, again, I thought better word, transform the economic landscape for our nation. By recognizing these achievements, we honor the SBA's commitment to fostering economic opportunity and supporting the indomitable spirit of our small business owners. America is a nation of progress, and small businesses are vital, inspiring competition, and innovations that drive our economy and our country forward. Good ideas are everywhere, but opportunities are not. The SBA plays a vital role in fostering entrepreneurship, ensuring capital access, assisting with contracts, providing counseling services to small businesses and entrepreneurs have the opportunity to turn good businesses into great businesses. SBA is instrumental in providing unparalleled access to capital for entrepreneurs who face obstacles of securing traditional funding through the SBA's loan guarantee programs. Small businesses have thrived, created jobs, economic growth, and realization of countless American dreams. With its firm commitment to promoting diversity and equity, the SBA has launched a HATE-A-Business Development Program, which provides support, mentorship, and access to government contracts for socially and economically disadvantaged small business owners. The program opened the doors of opportunity for minority-owned businesses, thus creating a more inclusive and just economic landscape. Recognizing the extraordinary contributions that American women make to our economy, the SBA established the Office of Women's Business Ownership and apparently women entrepreneurs and women-owned small businesses to thrive. Specialized resources, counseling, and access to federal contracting opportunities. The SBA continues to promote gender equality, excuse me, equity in business ownership, and has helped women, shattered glass ceilings, build strong, successful businesses, and helps towards great economic prosperity. In times of crisis, the SBA plays a crucial role in disaster recovery, providing disastrous disaster loans to businesses and homeowners impacted by natural disasters. Economic injury disaster loan offer, loans offer a lifeline against devastating, two devastating communities that can accelerate the rebuilding process, revitalize local economies, and help businesses foster resilience in the face of adversity. During the unprecedented, unprecedented challenges brought forth by COVID-19 pandemic, the SBA played a pivotal role in keeping our economy afloat with its administration of critical relief programs. Pay check protection program, COVID, COVID Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, and the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, and the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant help small businesses keep lights on, safeguard their billions of jobs for observed livelihoods, and ensure the survival of American enterprises that face one of the greatest global challenges in the, in of the past century. Now, therefore, I, John Brown, Mayor of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim July 30th, 2023, that today to celebrate the 70th anniversary of the U.S. Small Business Administration, I call upon the people of the City of McAllister to acknowledge the SBA for its seven decades of service, guidance, and support to small businesses across our nation. I urge all citizens and community organizations to join me in honoring the SBA's remarkable, remarkable legacy by continuing to support and uplift nation's small businesses. Let us recognize their pivotal role as engines of innovation, job creation, and community prosperity as we work together to build a vibrant, inclusive, and resilient economy for all Americans. Witness this day.
So, good job.
Intreth the door, intreth the door. Yeah. Yeah. Janet Hall, I want this. You're now on to citizens' councils and non-agenda items. Residents may address accounts in the garden item, and it's not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council press comments be limited to five minutes. Did you happen to see?
I didn't notice any twenty minutes.
I don't, I don't see any residents here with a red bulletin or for the city or the newspapers that are going to go. We are going to jump ahead to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items if the consent is desired. The item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, the agenda consists of A, approval of minutes from July 11th, 2023, regular meeting, council or city council; B, approval of claims for July 5th, 2023 through July 18th, 2023; C, consider an act upon to concur with the mayor's appointment of Misty Wilson to the Stormwater Drainage System Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 2026; D, consider an act upon to concur with the mayor's appointment of Jarrett Sanders to the Stormwater Advisory Drainage, Stormwater Drainage System Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 2025; E, consider an act upon and definitely postponing poor claim number 213272-1-MR filed by Roy Clark Jr. F, consider an act upon and definitely postponing poor claim number 213088-1-AG filed by Breck and Wagner on behalf of Carol Anne Greer; G, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of McAllister and Oklahoma Municipal Corporation and McAllister United Soccer Club. I'm going to pull G. Would anybody else like anything pulled?
Aye.
I'll take the motion in a second to approve items B through F. Bush, Councilman House, and Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Councilman House?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I'm going to go just go top of lots, item A.
Oh, you're good. Councilman Boatright, myself, we're not actually, we were noted as that some.
And so I would take a motion in a second to approve item A with that correction. Most of the council, the second council vote right, and discussion, Corvage, call it all, please.
Councilman Few?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, the motion carries. Uh, so it turns out we're not actually ready to act on agreement with, uh, with, under G, so we're just going to pull that from above the agenda. That, and we will move on to the public hearing. All persons interested in ordinance, this is an underscheduled business, shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the City Charter. Tonight, our hearing is an ordinance authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the City of McAllister, Pittsboro County, State of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, the 12th day of September, 2023, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of McAllister, Pittsboro County, Oklahoma, the question of their approval or rejection of proposed changes to the McAllister City Charter and other purposes. Take the motion in a second to open public hearing. Motion, Council vote right, and Council, uh, Smith, any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're now in the public hearing. If anyone would like to address some of this, please come forward. See, in no one, I take a motion in second to close public hearing. Motion, Council Few, second, Council Smith, any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Councilman Few?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Who are now on the scheduled business. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign change order number one from S3 Construction LLC and the decreased amount of $24,102.72 from the contracted amount of $288,651, leaving the new contracted price of $264,548.28. This is due to the final reconciliation project. This is what the new circle needs to store and storm water.
Mayor, Council, pleasure to be here tonight. Um, this project is, uh, is completed. All the work has been completed. And so this is the recognition. I'm getting some. Reconnaissance. They ended up, we had to add a manhole to avoid, uh, some obstructions back there, but there's a net deduct of the 24,000 total of items coming out, so we recommend we accept this. We'll be coming to you to accept the project as complete. We are gathering the final paperwork from the contractor, but all the work and the field is complete.
So it's got some of this last summer thought.
About 10% less.
It's a tough decision to make.
Got a couple this year.
Any, any questions or comments? Take a motion in second to approve. Motion, Council Roden, second, Council, uh, Vote Right. Any further discussion? Or would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Roden?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Few?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to agenda item number two. Consider an act upon an ordinance authorizing the calling and polling of a special election in the City of McAllister, Pittsboro County, State of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, 12th of September, 2023, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of McAllister, Pittsboro County, Oklahoma, the question of their approval or rejection of proposed changes to the McAllister City Charter and other purposes. This is what we did at our last meeting. We have to, we have to do it by ordinance. This is the ordinance that confirmed that. If, if there's any other questions or comments, where are these council?
Uh, page 5D, uh, right after the line that struck out, uh, it says, "Regular council meeting after first Tuesday after first Monday." So, correct.
That's give that. That, that is consistent with what the charter says when the, that election is supposed to occur. Odd phrase.
It's really the first Tuesday comes after the first Monday.
Not always, but not always, because the first Tuesday could be the first day of Monday.
That was true. Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all happy.
I have the same question, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Take the motion and set to go approve. Motion, Smith, second, Council Vote Right. Any further discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Few?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon and revoke, reject, and reestablish a bid for purchase of two cemetery columbaria, the never-ending columbaria. I can.
You know, my. I'll just hear for answer question. Okay, I'll, I'll kind of walk you through it. The same reason we had to reject him the first time happened the second. So, um, we're either going to have to, um, change the way the bid reads or the, the, the request for proposal reads, or we're going to have to just continue to bid until somebody comes out with, um, the wording, or somebody submits a bid that doesn't have a, uh, prepaid option on it, so.
So the reason that the bids are bad is because they're at, they are coming in.
Asking for a deposit.
Yeah.
Is there only one bid?
There was only one bid on this. That's correct. So.
Since this was donated money, does that not make any difference?
And for, so we, as a policy, the city has never allowed for a deposit, uh, in, in my time, we, 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 we don't do it. Um, we don't allow for deposits because we don't have a guaranteed work. And we don't do that with public money. Now, in this case, it is donated money. Um, and that's why I was saying we may have to change how that bid goes out. But the, the proposal, the request for proposal did very specifically say that all funds are the requirement of the, um, they're, they're on the, the bidder, not on us, so. I can't, I can't accept a bid that, that goes against the RFP.
Okay.
So if we're going to change the RFP, that would be different, and we can do that. Um, there's no law that says we can't do, but we just, I can't, I can't accept a bid that, that didn't follow the RFP.
Well, it'd be opening a can of worms if you changed it and did it, because then.
Everyone's been wanting to.
Yeah, and you know, we do a multi-million dollar contract, some is. Quarter million dollars upfront, that would.
But we're using donated funds, not, not public fund.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you set a precedent, though.
Mayor, let me kind of address that. The, the, the funds may have originated in private sources, but once they enter our bank accounts, they're public funds. There, we don't have a single dollar at City Hall that is not a public fund, regardless of its source. What, even if the fact that it did not arrive from tax dollars is irrelevant once it's in a public bank account.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, but.
I understand, yes.
It, it'll get done. It's just got, it's got, it's one of those government contract.
We're getting choose the old counterfeit. We're trying to get rid of that.
We really want to do it, and, and Doug is shaking his head, because we really want to do it. We just, it just, for some reason, we can't get it across. You've got, you've got to accept that, Riz. The city can't.
Any other questions or comments? Take the motion in second to approve. Most of the council, Smith, second, Council, uh, House, any discussion? Or would you call it all, please?
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilman House?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We will now move to new business. Any matter not known or which has not been previous, previously foreseen, prior to the time of posting the agenda according to section 313311.9, Title 25 Oklahoma State Statute. Any new business?
Nothing from the city.
Okay, so let's go to city management.
So I have, uh, included the city management support with, uh, today's, uh, table. I've tried to get it into the, the end of the agenda, but I wasn't here last week, so. Um, which that is part of my, uh, report for tonight is last week I attended the city managers, uh, associated, uh, city managers of Oklahoma Association. Man, tongue tied, tongue tied all night. I guess we're all in a mess. So our conference, uh, summer conference happened last week, uh, last week, and it was an amazing conference. We, we did a lot of training on, um, we had everything from, um, protection on fentanyl, uh, issues where it's a real threat. It's, it's an absolute threat, and it's really actually starting to make its way into, um, city halls inadvertently and through, um, we'll just say malicious activities. So we have to find ways to, uh, combat that. And one of the things I've kind of directed our, our directors yesterday morning was we're going to have to find some policy, some, some way of, of combating this, because the threat is real. And, uh, we, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect our people, so. On the other side, we also had some really good training in homelessness and, uh, how, um, how other towns are kind of combating these things, and, uh, you know, they got some really good ideas that will bring those up as, as time allows and when, when things start. You know, with the mayor, you're, you're working through the, the parents' council and homelessness. This may be talks that we can, we can kind of put into that, so. And we had ethics training, and we had, it was just, it was all around a great, great training opportunity for me, and appreciate you guys being a continued supporter of me going to those trainings, so. That is what I have for these.
Uh, remarks, any words by city council?
Yeah, I recently put a sidewalk replacement in my house and the lock wall. I've had several friends wondering if the city paid for it, so.
I can definitively say, under no circumstances did the city pay for any of the work that was done on.
Thank you.
The councilman's property. It was all out of his own funds. I can, I can say it, but it is beautiful work. Well done, sir.
And it won't matter how many times you say it. Yes, I feel. Some Roden. But, uh, mayor's, uh, comments, just a couple. Uh, we met, uh, well, we went to ribbon cutting today, the Choctaw Nation. They, uh, are built, they built some houses in McAllister. They've already got the, uh, allocated to the people that they're going to. They are going to be building, I think he said, 600 more throughout the Choctaw Nation, not, not specifically in McAllister, but we will get some of those as things go on. So we're getting, and we're getting some help from the nation as far as the housing goes. And, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the dance of having these a festival, uh, over the weekend was remarkable. There, there were, this is not hyperbole. There were thousands of people there. And of all of that, I talked to our PD guys that were working it, and no trouble. You know, it, it, I mean, it was such a, such a good feeling going on and all that. I, I, I saw some pictures on Facebook with fake arrests by the, by our officers that, so that, it was that relaxed of an atmosphere. And, uh, the, the music was incredible. I, I did not know I was a fan of Cody Canada and the Departed, but I definitely am now. They were fantastic. I would recommend if they, you know, when they do the next ones, if you don't know, you're really missing out. It was just remarkable. And I, and everybody that I've talked to just had, you know, a great time. And being able to do that in McAllister with, uh, with that quality of entertainment and that cool of a crowd for, you know, a better way to say it, was just for, it was a special feeling that I, yeah, yeah. That, uh, we will recess the council meeting, and I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, a motion to include approval of minutes from July 11th, 2023, regular meeting with McAllister Airport Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item B and adjourn. Most of the council, fifth, second council vote right. Any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. And I take a motion to convene as McAllister Works Authority, both include approval of minutes from July 11th, 2023, regular meeting, McAllister Works Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda B, C, D, and to adjourn. Motion, Council, uh, Vote Right, second, Council Roden. Any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. I take a motion to convene, uh, as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from June 27th, 2023, regular meeting, McAllister Retirement Trust Authority. Approval of retired benefits for the period of July 2023 and to adjourn. Most council, now, second, Council Smith. Any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Councilman House?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Boatright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and we are now back in session. I would take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307B4, confidential communications by a public body and its attorney. Certain opinion investigation, claim of action, if the public body with the advice of its attorney determines its exposure will serve the integrity of the public body to pro- process this claim or any pending investigation, litigation, proceeding the.
I saw advice.
Council Smith, uh, second, Council Vote Right. Any discussion? Corvage, call it all, please.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Boatright?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're now in session. Yes, we're now in session.
We are, we are back from the executive session. All meetings that I just listed on the agenda were discussed. The polls are both sort of taken.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, pursuant to twenty five O S three oh seven B four, the council did convene an executive session to discuss with the city attorney matters involving pending claim or investigation. At this time, I believe a proper motion would be to authorize City Manager David Andrade to settle the claim with full authority as discussed in the executive session.
I will make that motion as your second, second Councilman Few. Any discussion? Corvage Call, roll please.
Councilman Few?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Beltwright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. The motion carries. That being all our business, I take motion of adjournment, motion of Councilman Smith and Councilman House. This is session.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilman House?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Beltwright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, you can know where that good at. I'm drunk. Okay.
Oh, I may look like this, but I know. It's a y'all actor this now.
You are serious when this is announced.
Two after.